Good morning.
Good morning.
We will call our meeting to order. This is the number 14, 2023, and it's a call meeting, I guess, or planning meeting for us, a workshop for the North Spur Planning Commission. And we'll call the meeting to order. We do have a quorum present. No public comments been registered. So we'll begin with new business. Proposed amendment to the city zoning ordinance pertaining to miscellaneous revisions to the following sections. Starting with section two, definitions. Can I go ahead and read the whole thing?
Just a real quick background. So we looked at, so these are, these are changes, updates, and staff had done a great job working on Holly leading the task of looking at some of the ordinances, some of the guidelines that we have run into where it wasn't clear, some of the definitions that weren't clear, some of the uses that didn't, wasn't in the chart. Those types of things are what we're really going to go over. Thought it'd be a good time to actually do it in this format so that we walk through what the changes, background on that, and then have any feedback from, from this body if needed. And then that way, when you're voting on the changes or the updates, that you actually know what's in the actual document, that nothing is cooked in or didn't, didn't what's to talk about. So very informal meeting. Holly will walk through each highlighted area to identify what, what we're suggesting or proposing, and then we'll just go to the next one. If there is something to be talked about as she's going through each one of the items, open to talk about it, ask questions about it at that point. We'd much rather that happen as we go as opposed to holding all the questions to the end. So it's just an open dialogue and very informal meeting to make sure everybody understands what's being proposed for the upcoming council planning commission meeting. So, Holly?
Well, good morning, everyone. I feel like we're in a Christmas holiday festival here, a very intimate setting. But I'm glad we put it together as a workshop so that, one, you know, some of our stakeholders can better hear what we're actually looking at. And you can see the sections that we're going over. The two sections I want to start with are kind of the heavier lists, which is both our chart one and our definitions section. So the main thing between those two is we had some definitions that were in place but no use in the use table, or vice versa. And some of those things, as we would process applications, it caused confusion for the public, the staff, those sort of things. So really what we were shooting for is consistency between those documents. We decided not to take parking on at the same time because we figured parking you might want all by itself because that always is, is a charged issue. So with that, the biggest change, as you can see here, is the column on the far right. Normally you might not see overlay districts, but because there are many staff that work with our CCO and there are many prohibited uses, that if it's in the CCO, it's also in our downtown. So we wanted to make sure to have those two kind of side by side so that it wasn't an oversight that, oh, we allowed something to go in that wasn't really allowed to go in, in the CCO. But we hope that these changes will make it clearer for both the public and staff so that we have consistency in how we roll it out and go through our approval processes. So everything that we've added in the far left column, you'll notice, except for the first one, it should have been a N there, but N means not allowed. So it's the antithesis to our use chart. Anything, of course, still with the Xs and Ss are what's allowed either by BZA approval or by right. So going quickly through this, but definitely stop me anytime that you need to.
And, and just, just to let y'all know that, that's, the list of prohibited uses in the CCO is currently in section 24. And so what we're doing is we're moving it to chart one so that it is with the other list of permitted uses so that someone doesn't have to flip back and forth between section 24 and chart one to figure out. And that, I think, that's to help the public and staff.
Do you want to work with the newest planning commission members to talk about chart one real quick and the CCO?
Sure, sure. So chart one is the chart that we all go to when someone calls us and says, hey, I've got a piece of property, I need to know if I can do a car lot here. And so we go to chart one, and all the uses are in alphabetical order by category. We look to see if that particular use is permitted. The X represents that it is permitted by right. The S represents that it is permitted by special use permit. If there, if the, if the square is blank, where the zoning district and the use come together in the chart, that means it's not permitted at all. And so the city core overlay district, which are our additional set of regulations, overlay regulations for our downtown area, it has a list of prohibited, uses that are prohibited within the CCO. And so like I was mentioning earlier, if someone wants to find out what is prohibited in the CCO, they have to, they look at the base zoning district in chart one, but they also have to flip back to section 24 to cross-reference. And so we're trying to put all of those in one location for ease of, of use by, by the public.
And then the last comment is, you'll notice the superscript numbers, those go back to our end notes. So our chart one has a, a long end note section because some of the uses may not be triggered by a BZA, but they may have similar requirements, like a car sales, you have to have 150 foot, you know, foot long loading and unloading zone to have that use if it's a brand new use starting day one. So we always use this chart with the end notes that follow it. Most people aren't necessarily aware of that. So we always, you know, when somebody asks for a zone request for their property, we send them chart one with the end notes because without the end notes, you only get a portion of the picture of what's allowed. Okay. So accessory dwelling unit, that one, we were just missing a end note. And again, if it's shown with a red category, red is brand new. And I've highlighted chart one just so you can see it. And last note I will make is, you know, as we think through things tomorrow, we have this, again, on your agenda for potential setting of a public hearing, but if there's other questions you don't think of today, definitely jot them down, reach back out to staff if, for some reason, you know, we're not able to cover today, or you remember it as soon as you leave. Oh, man, I should have asked about X. So.
CCO stands for?
City Core Overlay.
Okay.
City Core Overlay, just like we have.
The map of the individual, whatever it's owned.
So city core overlay basically represents the area of South Clark to the east of.
More like the downtown city, I think.
It's like.
That area of the city.
Yes. So it includes your historic bottoms, your North Highland Plan area, plus some areas that are kind of adjacent, immediately adjacent.
Just asking so it's clear for the newer members.
Yes. And.
Are you a newest member?
And so here you can, can see that area kind of delineated Clark, Memorial, Broad, and Mercury, well, not Mercury anymore, MLK, all the way to Middle Tennessee. So originally, eight years ago, nine years, 10 years ago, it was only downtown district. And then about seven years ago, it was expanded.
And overlay district regulations are regulations that are placed on top of the base zoning regulations. So you could have, you know, commercial highway zoning, then if you have city core overlay district, and there are going to be additional regulations that, that supersede some of the base zoning regulations. So, you know, we have several different overlay districts. We have city core overlay district, gateway design overlay district, historic overlay district, historic zoning overlay district, airport overlay district. So it's, it's kind of additional regulations that fit that particular area of town.
Rather than making new zonings for area overlay.
Exactly.
They just have different requirements or restrictions.
Yes.
Cool, that makes sense. Thank you.
Okay, going back.
Exactly.
Team members helping each other. So going through, some of them were easy enough ones. They were footnotes that probably shouldn't have been there originally. Heliports, really, those are something that are more determined based, not necessarily their zone district, but if you have a hospital, ambulance services, those things we thought with a special use permit should be able to be considered in various sections of town. Technology and trade schools, currently we just have like university as a separate, but we thought these particular uses are able to be in some of the other districts of town without necessarily being limited to our university's own district.
Did we talk to?
Yes, I think so.
On that one, I didn't see a definition of that, or maybe that's why. I just wondered why it wasn't allowed in some, some more diverse areas. I'm assuming that's geared toward like the TCAT, I think it's called TCAT over on Old Ford Parkway, right there at Old Salem. That looked like that could fit in a few more districts to me than what was allowed there. It looked a little more intentional. I don't know, maybe it had something more high like Lincoln Tech, and that might be a little more noisy. I'm not sure what it's geared towards.
Well, and we did leave a placeholder because Matthew noticed as well, technology and trade schools, we probably want to better define that so we can better understand it. But I think the first scratch at it was heavier transportation needs usually are the limitation factors. So there's two zone districts that you may recall for like drive-throughs and gas stations. Want to say it's CEEL or CF. Is very limited to other types of uses. So we're wanting to make sure that some of those uses are cognizant of that because you wouldn't want to drop a, you know, tech school in the middle of a residential neighborhood. So, but good point, Matt. Just curious, what other districts did you think that they might fit?
I was thinking, you know, look at CF, look at MU, you know, and maybe a true trade school is not appropriate there because it's going to be a little more noisy, but something that's more tech. And I don't, I don't know if there's an easy way to separate them entirely, but so I can see why you would be picky about where some of that stuff goes, for sure. But if it's something that's entirely classroom space, like I think what's at Old Ford and New Salem is entirely classroom space. To me, that could fit in a very diverse area.
Yeah, and then under the trade school one, I think there was one that was like a diesel truck training facility. That would definitely not be anywhere appropriate.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Why?
Truck, trucks.
But the technology side of it, if it was just the technology.
Yes.
High school, so maybe just the S, is that appropriate in some of the other areas?
That, that's what I was kind of thinking towards, is that in those more sensitive areas, you apply the finding standards that BZA has, that kind of takes care of any noxious uses that might be allowed in something that's more sensitive.
People can't use that as a way to sneak in something that shouldn't be there?
Yeah, they, exactly. But our thought is, is, you know, you want to encourage other technology and higher education that maybe university is not for everybody. Okay, good catch. So artisan use, that's actually was already, you can see to the right, is in our definitions section, and that's really more the craft type uses. If you look at our CCO, it talks about leather works, metal works, things that are very small scale, kind of craftsmen or what you might see over at Blacksmith up across the street at Keeningsburg. So we wanted to make sure to capture that in our use table because there are several uses that are more structured by 3,000 square foot cap if they're more like a small scale kind of project.
Holly, is the underlining significant? I know the asterisk is on the ends, right?
Yes, so the underlining and it probably, it could be underlined or not. Everything in the far right-hand corner is new. The difference is, da-da-da-da-da-da. Need to double check because I think there were maybe about four categories that we proposed new prohibitions in the CCO, meaning they're not in the existing list.
Okay.
So I will go back and just make sure.
So that could be what the underlining?
Yes.
So convenience store?
Yes.
Data center?
Yes, so data center is all new category. If you notice, everything is red all the way across. So that is a new use altogether. So just like the artisan use here is all red, that's a whole new use category to tick and tie back with our definitions. And then under the auto body, kind of a good synopsis on them is that we specified auto body uses. What we're starting to see is extremely heavy duty, like working on diesel, Mack trucks, caterpillars, very large scale things that really need to be in our industrial districts. So we've taken the automotive use and really specified it into service, which is your general service that you're going to see on a regular basis.
Like express oil change or tire discounter or something like that?
Right, so here you'll see automotive, motor vehicle repairs, repair of automobiles, motorcycles, light duty trucks, not exceeding 8,500 pounds, including but not limited to, whoop, other one, service. There we are. So service, you'll notice, is routine maintenance, motor vehicle, motorcycles, light duty trucks, including but not limited to mufflers, oil, lubrication, tire sales, service rotations, alignments. And it excludes any auto dismantling, recycling, and outdoor storage of inoperable wrecked, dismantled vehicles. So we wanted to make sure that the noxious uses were not going to be allowed in districts because they spill over into the neighborhoods. So that's, I think, the biggest change here under really these three categories. So you'll notice here, the things that you're doing on a regular basis are CHMU and the industrial districts, whereas repair is more like your engine work, something that takes a lot longer and it's sitting there a lot longer. Those are only proposed in the industrial districts. And then really the auto body shop, where you could literally have dismantled parts, dismantled vehicles, outdoor storage, those we're only looking at being in the heavy industrial district. So definitely, as you look through the automobile ones, those are probably the ones that I'm spending the longest time on. The other ones are pretty minor, but any questions?
What if you have a, a body shop that is in a dealership?
If it's an ancillary use. So if we go under the car, automotive sales, you'll see some of them, I believe they show them as an ancillary use.
Okay.
So as long as it's not the primary use, meaning that's all you're doing.
Okay.
And then if you're doing, let's say, light repair and service and automobile body, you would kind of look at where are those three all lining up? So you can do all of those in this district if you were only doing, you know, less amount, it would be a more limited basis.
So Holly, where would Gerber, like a Gerber type use fall in? I mean, because they can do engine repair.
Right, that falls under repair.
Gerber's a body shop.
Oh, is it a body shop?
Yeah.
Okay, so it would be.
So it'd be a heavy industrial use.
Yes.
And Holly, on that one, is that a percentage, like where their sales and repair is like 50/50, or is it like a 70/30, or does it have to be, when you're taking ancillary, does it really have to be a minor portion of their business that define that and qualify that?
Well, I think it's the outdoor storage trigger more than anything else. If you can, if the public can see all of this stuff going on in the front areas of a property, that's where it starts to draw the line, you know, a little bit closer. So we do have some that are directly adjacent to residential, and they just little spill right into all of the residential neighborhoods. This line seems a little gray. It is.
I think, I think it's, if a business holds itself out as a, as a body shop like, like Gerber, I think it's, it's easy to classify. If it, I think the service and repair, sometimes those kind of bleed over a little bit. I think if the, if the principal use is, is consistent with one of the definitions, I think that is what we would. Now, because, because, I mean, you're right, but sometimes we do, we try to make it as black and white as possible, but sometimes there are some gray areas that inevitably pop up.
A friend of mine owns ex tire shop, literally, it's called Sutton Tire Shop, but over 50% of his receipts are oil changes and body repairs. But it's called tire shop. So you guys have classified it as vehicle service?
Tire shop.
Or it has a separate one?
So tire shop is actually covered under the service section.
So it's under service, right? Okay.
Yep, so it's already under that section.
But he does body work. Okay.
And this one says it actually excludes body work.
That's something you guys may want to look into because DOT defines like multiple categories of vehicles, class D, class E, and not just based on weight because there's some like F-250 or something that'll be over 8,500 pounds. And pretty soon, if they do electric vehicles, like a Civic will be over 8,500 pounds. So you could get real, and I think like instead of trying to say what they're doing, you might just say like, you don't want, you know, like a box truck might be perfectly fine to pull in and do an oil change, but it's over 8,500 pounds. But you don't want like a dump truck or.
Commercial truck.
A semi trailer, yeah.
Yeah.
And that, or a truck. And they really define that. And, you know, an RV.
Right.
Like is usually classified as commercial.
Well, and as you'll see, as we get further down, we also refined the auto sales. So you may recall there was automobile sales, and then there was other than automobile sales. There's a third category that we've added on that's really medium duty and heavy duty, sales, service. So it could actually do both of them in that district versus this section. But we had that very same conversation about the 8,500 versus 10,000, and there were some areas that the 10,000 started to get some of those heavier duty here.
But.
Not use weight and use like official DOT.
Point taken. We'll, we'll, we'll look at those definitions and, and try to fine tune those for public hearing.
Another thing they do too is air brakes. If it has air brakes, that's usually a commercial vehicle and requires a special license, no matter what it weighs.
Well, some of it works in transportation.
And we appreciate all your expertise on that.
Part of our thought process too was which standard do we want to use? Because like you were saying, DOT, EPA, NHTSA all have different standards as far as what.
Yeah, or the one that a license and qualifies it, like DOT, or FMCSA, Federal Motor Carrier Association. But I think the DOT is the official. Like if you're driving this vehicle on this road, that's what tells you is it legal or not. So the same thing that would say you can drive this type of vehicle on this road would be the same, a good definition to use.
I think for our purposes, Mr. Roundtree's interpretation could be different than our interpretation, and that's a problem when Mr. Roundtree or Mr. Taylor come before. Lightning commission. When the city council interprets it different than lightning commission.
Because you might have trucking companies come in and be nefarious and try to open up terminals.
We know how trucking companies are.
Yeah.
And they might say like, oh, we're changing one, or we're changing oil on one quarter of months, and then now we can have a.
I think, I think the overarching goal, and I think that we, obviously we still have some work to do in getting there, but I think the overarching goal is to, to kind of right-size, if you will, our, our, our standards for, for, our standards for these types of uses so that the lighter ones are, you know, more visible, commercial, you know, more, you know, are allowed in more, you know, retail corridors. You know, so I think, I think some of the lighter ones work well in retail corridors. We have a couple of them in the gateway. There's, you know, tire discounters, I think, and a Valvoline, and I think they blend in well there on Medical Center Parkway. You have Firestone, NTB. But I think what we're trying to do is to make the, the more intense auto repair, auto body shop type uses so that they are not on those, on those visible retail corridors and, because they're, they do have, you know, kind of more of an industrial feel to it when you have all the outdoor storage of inoperable or, or wrecked vehicles. And so I think.
It's commercial uses is like what you don't want.
Yeah, but we're, we're taking this feedback and we'll.
It's tricky.
Yeah, well, we wrestled over these definitions, but we'll, we'll continue to work to fine tune those.
And speaking of wrestling, I just want to give a kudos to the staffers behind you because they participated in about four or six intensive work sessions where we went through these and we were fine tuning those definitions and specifics by the experts who actually day in, day out are seeing it at the front counter and making sure to give good customer service. So kudos to our staff.
Hey Holly, can I ask you real quick to that?
Sure.
Jamie's point, there's two things that we run into. This is one of them where our clients would go, what percentage do we need to be if there's any sort of ambiguity? Because I think the same thing would, when we get into, right, when we get into mixed use and it's, you know, we've done three or four projects where we hit commercial and we had a certain percentage, well, it wasn't enough. You know, it wasn't enough to qualify for mixed use. So we, well, what is it? And there's really no answer. And so that sliding, that sliding scale, you know, we're always trying to leverage that for our clients to make sure we can get down to what we might have done. But if it's ambiguous, it really looks ambiguous when we walk up and we say, well, it's not enough. You know, you have too much.
Or their customer database changes after they've opened, which was the point with my friend with the tire shop.
Right, yeah, their business more.
Yeah. And Clyde and I just agreed on something, so let the record be.
We always come to your side.
I think what we really need to do is we need to define for each of these three uses what are acceptable accessory uses and what are, because we have a definition of what is an accessory use and a principal use. So I think we define what is, what are acceptable accessory uses, you know. So, so in automobile service, which are the lighter ones, you know, I think we can exclude things that, that are, you know, that might make those, those uses a little bit more intense. But an automobile repair, you know, I think we can specify what is, what is acceptable. So we, we'll, we'll continue to work on that.
Hey Matt, can I ask please you a question? Do we ever go back and look at the re-zoning? And I get some asking about Broad and Manny Avenue, whether that car lot was able to just keep expanding their lot by buying, buying some of the old houses. Now they're gone, it just looks a mess. So do we ever go back and say, hey, I need to change that zoning so?
Well, we have some code enforcement issues in some of the areas because auto sales has not been allowed in the CCO for at least, what, eight, 10 years?
Right, but that's, it's still a car lot there, but nobody's there, isn't, you know, but, you know, that's, that's in the CCO, right?
Yeah, and there are some, there are some, some legal non-conforming issues with, with those types of uses where state law, if they're established on a piece of property, state law gives them a certain period of time to, to re-establish, whether it's the same owner or a different owner.
Yeah.
And so they do have certain protections as long as they were legally established before, before the, the ordinance prohibiting them was adopted. And so I think that we are, as Holly mentioned, I think there, there were, some of those, I think, kind of grew without permission, some of them grew with permission.
Right.
And so, yeah, there are some enforcement issues that we're currently, currently grappling with there.
To your point, the more clear it is from the onset, the easier it is to enforce a problem.
Yes, and I think like Greg said, that's, that's really what we're trying to do with, and we certainly don't want to create any additional ambiguities. What we're, what we're trying to do is, is, is remove some of those existing ambiguities so that it's clearer for y'all, clearer for council, clearer for our staff, clearer for the public. And so, you know, one of the things when it's, when it's unclear is there can be multiple interpretations on staff of how to handle it. I think Mr. Taylor and Mr. McGuire, Mr. Roundtree probably get those multiple interpretations from whoever's, whoever they're working with. And all of our staff are doing the best, the best they can to interpret it. But if it's unclear, sometimes it lends itself to multiple interpretations. So I think we're trying to, I think we're trying to, to remove some of those ambiguities.
And last but not least, going to that ambiguity is that you'll notice there's legalese that always says including but not limited to. We can't list every single use, but the question is always about impact to adjacent neighbors and if it's similar impacts, even if it doesn't have the specific, hey, I only replace air filters. Okay, which one? Okay, which one is that close or related to? And so if staff has questions on it, we always have meetings on Monday that can clarify that, so we're all kind of speaking with one voice there. Going further down, campground, that's one that we've proposed not have in our CH use because that's kind of a, not something that you'd normally see in the middle of a town because of its impacts. Commercial center. Here we've just added what the square footage is. When you look in our parking charts, there's like three or four different types of convenience or commercial center uses. And it's always based on square footage, so we thought that this would help the reader know which one is which. Convenience store, we've already had that previously, but really in the past, the five thousand square foot portion, as you see it in black, is how it's written today. So we wanted to give the opportunity for ones that are a little bit larger, if they're a little bit larger, they tend to have more impact on traffic for those things. Convenience store, data center, those ones, we're talking about putting them on our books. If you've looked at some of the planning magazines, data centers take a lot of energy off of the grid. And MTE is, or Middle Tennessee Electric is right with us to say, yeah, we don't want these huge data service farms because they're noisy and they take all the power away, no jobs. So we're adding this as a use most of the time. This one right now, we're proposing to be at sixty percent of the floor area within that data service center. There we go. Which does not exceed sixty percent of the gross floor area. So if it's fifteen thousand square feet. And we're thinking we may, you know, have fifty-one percent because most of our standards all go to a fifty-one percent being kind of a primary use. And there, again, we're only looking at it being in our CH and our industrial districts. Dry cleaning, in the past, we've had it in two different locations. And we think the intent of one was we're actually doing the work onsite, which tends to have a lot more chemicals that they utilize in those services. But there are a lot of places that they'll do the work at one place, they'll send it back out to their other shops for pickup. And we wanted to make sure that we weren't excluding those or creating new legal nonconformities. As legal will tell you, that's our, always our biggest thing that we're trying to look at is avoiding creating legal nonconforming uses. Going further down, fitness, right now it just says health club facilities. We've gotten a lot of questions on that. And so really breaking it into the greater than five thousand or less than five thousand.
This is called the Joel Aguilara Amendment.
Joel gets this question more than not at the front counter because there are a lot of people nowadays that are doing a smaller scale, you know, whereas it's a couple people in a class, those should be able to be allowed in most everywhere because they're really not a huge impact. So you'll notice here, all the districts that we're looking at, the lighter uses being in, and really the heavier ones, those are like, they're, they're large scale ones that are usually in a shopping center that's been repurposed and are huge facilities.
Hey Holly, can I ask a question about that?
Sure.
If someone had like a gym in their backyard, they want to have a little personal business, there's no residential district that would allow that by, that's accepted.
That'd be a home-based business and that would be subject to BZA.
Because BZA approvals for any traffic that's been created at the home occupation.
So on that, this is probably, I don't know if this is the right venue to bring it up or not, but, and what I'm about to say is probably going to be too restrictive, but I'm going to say it just because I got neighbors that are just irate over this whole business of having a beauty shop, one chair in a house where the covenants of the neighborhood say you can't have a home-based business, okay? But of course, from a BZA or the city's perspective, we could, we don't, we are not going to go by the covenants of the neighborhood. So, and, and please just say that, that's just too restrictive. But i- is there any way to say, if you're going to increase traffic count in the neighborhood, you can't have an in-home based business? I mean, that's just.
But increase it by how much? I mean, obviously you're going to increase it some because you're going to have, even if it's a one, so do you have to say?
Well, I don't even know.
How much you're going to increase it?
It may be too restrictive in the first place. I mean, there's no way, but.
Based on revenue or something?
Yeah, Ken, I think that, I think what you're talking about, it probably would be too restrictive just to go with the bright line rule of you can't increase traffic at all.
Right.
Because like Kathy was saying, I mean, any home-based business is probably going to increase it by at least one.
Yeah.
So, and it would probably be a little onerous on a home-based business owner to try to go do a traffic impact study.
Right.
In addition to that. But I, I think with the standards that are in place in the BZA review right now, and we can go over it more in detail, you or I, maybe it's, maybe it'd be good to have a BZA workshop to do that.
Right.
To go over the standards that are in place right now that, that you guys can consider on that. The, the one that you're talking about in particular and, and the restrictive covenants that, that were at play in there, you know, the, the rub that was there was our zoning ordinance does not have in the standards that we can consider restrictive covenants. We consider, you know, impact on the, on the surrounding properties, you know, the, any substantial change in the character of the neighborhood, things like that. And restrictive covenants themselves don't provide that the city can enforce them.
Right.
The only people that can enforce them are other property owners or somebody who's specifically named in there, which is why, you know, Mr. Taylor, Mr. Roundtree know on some restrictive covenants, especially for commercial properties, will, will work with the property owners to ensure that the city is listed as someone who can enforce the restrictive covenants when it's something that touches on, on a matter that, that concerns the city. So, but like, to get back to the point, I, I think it is within the BZA's purview to consider traffic impacts. You know, and I, and I think that's why planning staff works to try to set out like, if it's a, a home-based beauty salon or a barber shop or something, that it's, you know, that it's one person at a time.
Right.
Or, you know, only certain hours, things like that. But again, it's, the BZA is the ultimate decision maker.
Right.
And I think it's, you know, it's definitely within your purview and it would be beneficial to the deliberative process, maybe to, you know, to, to fully hash that out as, as you're going through to say, okay, the, the restrictions that they've got here, you know, is this still compatible with the neighborhood? Or, you know, is, you know, let's say it's, you know, one person, one person every thirty minutes for eight hours and it's sixteen cars, is sixteen cars too many for that neighborhood? And it might be.
Yeah. So I think it would be a good idea for us to have a discussion as a group, not one-on-one, but as a group with BZA because that was, that's been very contentious. And, you know, the whole comment is, is, you know, the city's not going to allow that to have and happen in certain neighborhoods, but it is going to allow it to happen, how allowed to happen in other neighborhoods, which is really not true. But the fact of the matter is, is I think as members of that board, we need to know where, where our line is, you know, especially when it gets as contentious as that situation or whatever it is for that matter. It's not gone away.
Yeah, so, and Ken, just along those lines, and so I think just from, from, from my years of experience, almost always the, the home-based business complaints that we get are for ones that are operating illegally anyway. The, we, we, I think we rarely get complaints about home-based businesses that have gone through the legitimate process and, because I think typically the amount of traffic that, that those bring is, is pretty negligible. And I think that once, oftentimes, once people get some experience with them in operation, they find out that, that they're, that as long as they adhere to the regulations, which most of them do, that it's, that it's not as impactful as, as they thought. But, you know, another thing that, that I would, just as, as a planner, you know, another perspective is, you know, in this changing world of, of, of work situations, family situations, different types of, of working options are oftentimes, you know, are, are beneficial, I mean, they, they, you know, for, for a variety of reasons. And so, you know, especially I think as we've seen with, with COVID over the last few years and so, you know, I would just say to maybe think, think about that and, and, you know, I think more working from home is probably a trend that, that we will continue to see here and, and around the, the country. And I think it's, to build on what Roman said, the, the board has the ability to, to put restrictions in place that, that are going to keep individual home-based businesses from having too much of a negative impact on the, on the surrounding neighbors.
Right. Well, I think we just need to know as a board, kind of what our limits are, what, what are our triggers, what are our boundaries that we can use and then take it from there.
Yeah, might be a good idea. We'll, we'll work on maybe trying to set up workshops in time for the new year.
All righty.
Thanks.
Let's get to simpler topics.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Parking garage, it's actually moved further down into the chart and really we're talking more about structured garages, which are different than standalone parking lots, which we try to avoid citywide. A gasoline station, this probably was a leftover from, I'd say, the nineteen-sixties. It was really the old gasoline station that did everything, that you could get anything repaired and so forth. So we really wanted to call that out separately. And you can see them in these particular districts because it's no longer all those repairs and maintenance tied to them, but if they want a gas station all by itself. And these are, again, the, and I'll double check that for you to make sure which ones are maybe new proposals for the CCO category. But I think currently it actually might be a, in there. Grocery store, we already had it defined, but there was no district for it. So we, of course, added that one in. Health club, that was the one that we consolidated above. So that's just taking that whole line out. Ice kiosk, that one is, CBD is actually not allowed currently, but it was not clear in our current use chart. Studio, you'll see this is karate studio and this was actually consolidated with the fitness categories above. Motor vehicle sales and rental, so this is the other part of the auto heavy lifts. So here, today, we have it states just like this is with automobiles. And then other than automobiles, so we did a couple of things. We better defined what an automobile is, and this is maybe where we need to take a look at that eighty-five hundred versus ten thousand pound issue on that one. And then you'll see other than automobiles, here we've actually specified that would be for your recreational vehicles, motor homes, camping trailers, really in the larger scale things that tend to amass a lot more land. And then this third one is the proposed new one, and you'll see it is medium and heavy duty vehicles only allowed in HI and GI. And that's because they're allowed to do sales, rental and repair. So when you get those big monster trucks and other vehicles, really those are things you want in the industrial areas where the roads can probably handle that kind of traffic more than a standard street would. Motor vehicle service, again, that was folded into the ones that we talked about further above. Parking structure, again, we just moved down the parking garage and then clarified the topic that it would be a structure and it could either be a principal structure or a, or, which means that it could be a standalone use and not just tied to a business. Whereas a parking lot, and you will see those in further sections, really is a, a different treatment. Personal service establishment, I will say the product that we got out to you is probably about a ninety percent there. There are a couple of areas where we still have a couple of question marks we had not had time to go back to, but.
You want me to read the definition of personal service establishment?
Oh, yes.
It's kind of a, it's kind of a nebulous term.
Yeah, so a lot of times people would be, what, what is a personal service establishment? So this would be a business providing non-medical services, including but not limited to tailored, seamstress, tanning salon, spa services, including manicure, pedicure, facials, massage, therapy and formal rental shops. Sales of merchandise is permitted only as an accessory use to the personal service being provided. And so hopefully that will help people better understand what that particular category is because before it was a little bit nebulous of a statement. So there's a couple of districts we're still looking at whether or not that fits or not.
Can we go back to parking lot?
Sure.
I'm a little bit curious why we're just, why we don't allow that at all. To me, they serve a purpose, I mean, I see some areas even downtown where they serve a purpose where you can't, you can't afford to build a parking structure right now. And even like if you look at downtown Nashville, parking lots serve a purpose not only for vehicles, but they can let a property owner generate some income while redevelopment comes to them. And so it seems to me that while we can regulate them, I, I hate to see that we just disallow them.
I agree. I mean, the thing about one college, if we could allow them to do a parking garage or parking lot right now, at least it would look a thousand times better than it looks right now. And it would get some public use for the good also.
Well, and some of what we're seeing in our industrial districts, we're starting to see people wanting an entire parking lot. So CarMax outside of town that you approved, I think, last year is nine acres of nothing but asphalt. And it's an inventory lot, basically. And so it's those kinds of uses that I think we're trying to, we always look at regulations, what are we trying to avoid? But maybe we can take a look at, you know, what specific carve-outs, you know, make sense for things. And secondarily is that you don't always want something to continue as a gravel lot or once it gets paved permanently, it may slow down any redevelopment of that site because you've just now invested thirty-five grand into asphalt in a parking lot and, hey, I need to get my rate of return and it's going to take me fifteen years.
Well, and I think what I'm after is usually wherever those things are going, when that redevelopment is coming, it's because they have to consolidate properties to make the project work that. Our, our parking lots specifically downtown are not big enough for redevelopment. They, and I have no idea what the current owner's intentions are, but downtown Nashville sure looks like to me they're holding it, they're doing, getting some cash flow. Just like if we're, if, if I want to redevelop a whole block of our downtown, you buy a house at a time, rent it out, it may not be the best desirable, but you rent it out to generate that income until you can afford to build something that the city is going to care and be proud of. And I think that is the same purpose that the parking lots deserve. I agree. We don't necessarily think we want our whole industrial areas to be this. I think we want to be very picky about how we allow those, but I think they need to be regulated rather than just disavow or.
I agree. It sounds like the carve-out could be a paid lot for public use, whether or not paid. But for, so like obviously CarMax isn't, I can't go park on CarMax's lot while I go shopping, but I could pay in that lot next to the old BOA building downtown.
And I think we were, we were trying to, and yeah, and that's one of those where, you know, there may be unintended consequences with what we were proposing. I think our primary concern was what Holly was referencing. We had gotten numerous requests over the last several years for folks who wanted to do like, who just wanted to have parking lots for tractor trailers. And, and I think that was something that we were trying to discourage, like without a principal structure and so, but, you know, we can certainly, we can certainly go back and, and evaluate the definitions and if the, if, you know, kind of more of a public pay parking lot is something that, that the planning commission wants to see, we can, we can try to distinguish those two uses.
And, and the zoning district too.
So I think the one thing, I know that, you know, at one point the city was looking at, do we, how do we help with the west side of Lidle Street and thought about, you know, should we do a public partnership, public-private partnership to do surface parking there and try to help with some of that? So I think, I mean, we can look at that and see, I think it's what zoning districts we, we would allow that in. If it's a CCO only or the downtown business area, so definitely look at that. look at that.
Well, something like a parking lot or a shared parking, where you want it probably out near the interstate or near a transit center in the future, something like that could fit into that category, too. I don't know how to regulate that, but today, trying to help come up with something. I think those services are going to become more important as we introduce public transit more.
Yeah, we actually do have, where the new transit facility is going, Wigo is actually working.
And I don't know, I don't know if they want to be, my impression is they're going to build a lot by themselves, like they want to build a lot by themselves, but, you know, it obviously feels integrated with the transit property.
And that's...
I don't know that toughness model.
To that point, we had to try to integrate it to make sure that we were reading, so, yeah, so, come on, take it.
Did you put it under just a special exception that it has to go to BCA as a case-by-case?
Yeah, I think, I think the route Matt's suggestion is probably going to be better. You know, we just get into self-created hardships and all kinds of stuff, so, but if we can identify the zoning district and what that is, I think it would be a better conversation and a better look at it.
Yeah, and Matt, point well-taken. It's actually been a prohibited use in our CCO for a number of years, and so that's, you know, we haven't allowed paving de facto parking lots that are grandfathered in.
Yeah. Do you want to do it?
Weight control, we really think that that fits into our regular categories. None of us want to know that we need to get weight control. Firearms shop, retail shop, principal use. So we, of course, have a couple of firearm-specific uses in town. We actually had some people ask if they could do them in home occupations. So some of those things are much more clearly specified, but now we actually have a use district, so you can see they're only allowed in our industrial districts. And of course, they still have to meet all regular, other federal and state requirements. Self-service storage facility, so this one, all we did is we moved it up from, it was at the bottom of our use chart, it's now moved up to the top of the use chart in the commercial section. So most of the time, the design guideline standards are more under the commercial side of things, and that's what staff looks at, which ones to apply depending on what use it is. So that was brought up here, and the CL district was the only district that we thought probably it shouldn't be in, so we do propose having that taken out of the CL district. And they're also limited to, I think it's 250 feet from a major intersection. If you're too close to Major Arturo on a collector's street, you can't have a self-service facility. Shopping center, these are the other three companion ones that I mentioned that just has really the square footage that's incorporated. And then here, we're proposing it be allowed in a CBD when you're talking of these smaller neighborhood commercial shopping center ones, which we are generally seeing in some of our mixed-use components. These next two are really two new ones. Some of them you may have seen in a lot of your program books. Vape shops have been one of the prohibited uses, so our sense is, is that's something that Planning Commission hasn't wanted to see a proliferation, so we worked with our legal to better define what is a tobacco/vape shop. And here, we actually did provide a percentage, 51% of the floor area, or earns 51% of gross sales to the display, sale, distribution, delivery, offering, furnishing, or marketing of cigarettes, smokeless tobacco, pipe, tobacco, vapes, or other nicotine-delivery devices, components, products, liquid nicotine, and liquid nicotine containers. So this is the first time that, you know, well, how can you really tell if you're marketing that you're a vape shop? Most likely, you are a vape shop. So that, I think, helps staff determine those a little bit better. And kind of a belts and suspenders, we've looked at adding a end note, which Matthew will tell you I don't like adding end notes to our very long list, but in this case, it really made sense to be able to have, and I'm just trying to see, go into the chart one, end notes. So that new end note talks about tobacco and vape shops where permitted by right shall be subject to a thousand-foot separation from another vape shop, public or private school, city park, daycare center, or churches. And that's very similar to our alcohol requirements that we don't enforce, but it's really downstairs in, I believe, our finance department. And we're looking at a minimum of a 250-foot separation from properties zoned or used for residential, measured from the parcel lines. So this is definitely a new policy, but we're looking at CH district and our industrial districts with that end note being met. So the idea is, is that you don't get a proliferation, not that we're saying, nope, you can't have them anywhere, but...
And with it being prohibited in the CCO as well.
Yes, and it would still, and we are looking at, so that's where definitely I need to have, see the underline there? So that one is a proposed new prohibition in the CCO, and if it's prohibited in the CCO, conversely, it's not allowed in the CBD.
So I have a dumb question. So you got a, you got a strip center that today can have a vape shop in it, but it doesn't, okay? And then we passed this, and then they want, a tenant wants to come in and become a vape shop. But that property, is that property grandfathered at that point, or, no? Okay, so they cannot push...
No, it's when the use, so when you look at legal non-conforming use or structure, it's the date in which that use is proposed.
Okay.
So if there wasn't, if there was a vape shop there today, he goes out and somebody comes back in to replace him, six months or within the state's timeframe, another one can go back in to replace them.
Right, okay.
But if the time lapses that the state says you can't go back in?
Or if that use wasn't there to be...
Correct. That was my, but, okay, you answered my question.
What is the mechanism for this 51%? So let's say this store opens and it's 51% selling Cohibas, and six months down the line, they decide we're going to go 55% vape shop now. What's the mechanism to police that?
Yeah, change of use with the building codes, I'm sure they would pull permits and do something different, so.
I mean, if they're just a retail store, and their percentages changed, I mean...
But if they're marketing, I think that's an easier one to...
We wouldn't know until somebody called in.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's it, nobody...
It's like every other zoning violation in the city, we really don't know they're occurring until somebody calls and says, hey, there's no longer a cigar lounge, it's now a vape shop. So then we would go in and do the zoning violation inspection involving that round. So, yeah, to your point, there's no mechanism.
The question is, where in town is selling Cohibas?
And what is a Cohiba?
It's a mask keeper.
It's a cigar...
I'm like, what do you know? Okay, so what about...
I just happen to have a few.
Just tack on Dick Ken's question. I guess, what if there's a vape or tobacco shop in the strip mall, we pass this, a daycare then wouldn't be able to move in next door? So we're actually pushing...
The daycare can't...
The daycare can go on top of the vape shop, but not the other way around.
Okay.
Just like the Mayday Brewery is there before the church.
Gotcha. Cool.
Although, yeah, they have a beer next to the church.
How does that work, so they have the choice? I mean, it doesn't work in both directions?
Right, it's the more restrictive. So if childcare has no limitations on where they can go, but the vape shop does, the vape shop, but if a daycare isn't there to start with, oh, good, I'm free going.
The presence of a daycare could prohibit a vape shop, but the presence of a vape shop would not prohibit the presence of a daycare.
I guess the daycare is considered...
Their choice.
And the vape shop would have protections, too. If a vape shop opens up and then the daycare moves in, they don't have to close down. They're still protected by the grandfather.
So my question, I was just looking, so the 51% of its floor space means that they, as long as they've got this amount of area with a merchandise is prohibited, so they couldn't have, you know, 51% of lounge space, it won't be passed. So it'd have to be 51% of merchandise area for his cabinets or stuff to sell. Is that correct?
It's either the floor area or gross sales.
Of the product.
Of the product. So if the product is doing 52% of the business, that's your primary business.
In other words, a grocery store would not fall under tobacco or vape shop, even though they may sell cigarettes?
And most, and most convenience stores, same way. They have a very small scale of it, but they're generally not advertising it as that's their, you know, if they have their entire frontage says vape shop.
Right.
You know, but it is a harder one to define and dig into.
Right, that's what I was...
But most often, whatever, what we found is whatever their primary business is, is what they're marketing. So that's, that's kind of the, you know, it's not as gray as it appears as we're talking right now.
So basically, they can't use the majority of the space for lounge areas, is what I'm saying, asking.
They could.
And when you say lounge areas, are we talking about the cigar lounge?
Yeah, I was just looking at the vape and cigar.
So we separated them out, and we see really cigar lounge being a bit different than the tobacco vape shop. So here, we see an establishment where the principal use is the sale of cigars to patrons that either smoke cigars on or off-site, so meaning that they can sell it there on-site and they can take it with them, or they can have a lounge where they're actually smoking on-site. And sales of food or alcohol is accessory to the use.
Is liquid smoke, is that what you consider liquid smoke, cigar lounge?
Way to call them out like that, man.
It's the only one that I, yeah, know of. Like, that was what I circled, that's what I thought you meant, and so I thought it being in the MU and the CBD would be okay, and that's where their clientele is, and, you know, like, I understand the vape shops if I do, because it's a little, I'll use the work of test, because I'm not sitting on your side of the table, but the cigar lounge, like, I've even had some people talk about converting some of our old law offices to cigar lounges, which I think is a great idea. Not a cigar guy, but I do think it's a great idea. And I don't, I don't think that would be allowed. I think that your clientele is also geared toward the MU districts because that's in the GEO, so I, you know, even if it's a special use type thing, I think those would be worth looking at.
And before we move on, Holly, is a thousand feet, you said, from parcel line?
Yes.
So you can't be measured in the middle of a strip center and use that calculation to be based on property lines?
Because it's really hard to measure otherwise. I mean, it really is, which door do you go to, and which section do, and I'll just move to that side of the commercial section.
Yeah, right. And that's kind of what we do with the beer sales and liquor sales, also, these parts of the parcel homes, state system.
Okay.
And just as a reminder to the planning commission, and to staff, and Matt, and Chris, and Clyde, we do have some food and beverages over there, if anybody needs a little bit...
Yeah, Brian didn't have any coffee in his hand.
And we're at an hour right now, if somebody needed a break.
Yes.
Right now, I'm losing all the...
It's comic section.
Very motivational stuff, so.
Cut through the heavy stuff.
Let's take a five-minute break and just rest our legs and relax.
I'm glad you said that, Greg, because I just tend to be pushed through.
I'm feeling good, I'm good, Johnny.
I agree.
Thank you. Thank you. And see, this is so much better when you have multiple eyes, because I will say, bar, it's a tavern, and that's in the CH district as well as downtown in any of the industrial districts, so it's bar.
So not changing where it's allowed, just defining it, because it wasn't defined earlier.
Right, and most people...
I'm getting flashbacks to microbrewery.
Wait, hold up, wait, where is CBD? Don't have anybody regulating CBD, the...
Because that says tobacco or nicotine. There's lots of other stuff that's not nicotine.
I think, I think that's something that is, I think we were trying to get what we could quickly with this, and there are certainly other things, and, you know, that's an evolving industry that I think probably will require additional time and research by staff to flesh those, those particular uses out.
But right now, we put those uses in a tobacco vape shop, that's where, how we put them in.
It's in like the L3, pretty similar.
Yeah, and that's what we thought, that that would be a catch-all for anything that was not a cigar.
Moving on down to our industrial district, most people might not have known, but industrial district is actually the manufacturer's storage and distribution of, so we just made sure to move that line, so it describes what the industrial is and everything below it. Back to the automotive dismantlers, recyclers, we're just specifying about how storage is to be treated. Bakery of candy goods, this is one of the interesting nuances, which I hated to add an end note, but there is an end note 33 that describes only uses that are less than 3,000 square feet in size would be allowed in the CBD, because anywhere in the CCO, it's prohibited if it's greater than 3,000. So they're kind of like the opposites of each other, because the overlay only talks about prohibitions, whereas the left side, the zoning district portion, only talks about allowances. So they're kind of opposites of each other. Contractors' storage yard, this is where a lot of our exterior storage-type uses go, but we wanted to add a new one that contractors, construction equipment, sales, and rental. So that would be like your large earth-moving vehicles, and let's go to the definition. There you go. So the new definition that we're looking at is contractors, an establishment that engages in the sales and/or rental of, construction equipment, construction vehicles, including but not limited to moving equipment, dump trucks, construction trailers, scissor lifts, lighting, scaffolding.
Earth-moving equipment.
Yep. So that was one that we started to see some issues within some of our districts, and really, again, those should be in our industrial districts, because they're pretty heavy-duty equipment, and they tend to have lots of earth-moving stuff that they're dragging on roadways when they are located outside of other areas.
An example of that use would be the Sunbelt Rentals down on South, South Gate Boulevard.
Golf carts.
Golf carts? Do they have golf carts?
You calling Mikey's out?
Nope, I didn't say anything.
What about like landscape companies, without a separate...
Most of them would be contractors' yard, storage, outdoor, but they're similar, they're also only allowed in the industrial districts.
If there's a contract, a landscape contractor who operates out of a nursery, you know, like South Branch, for example, the nursery would be the principal use, and we already have nursery included as an entry in Chart One.
And then, too, if it's an indoor contractor storage, it's treated a little bit differently because, again, it's not as intensive a use. Going back down to custom wood products, similar to the one above, this is the, if it's less than 3,000, it's allowed, it's prohibited if it's over 3,000. Data center service farms, so again, as we mentioned earlier, really the thought process is applying our BCA's binding standards to determine whether or not something larger-scale than that 15,000 would potentially be allowed only in our industrial districts. We talked about this one earlier, the laundry facility is for dry cleaning, this is where they would actually have the chemicals done, and we're looking at mostly our industrial districts and potentially also in our CH districts, but not some of those lighter districts that you saw of... those lighter districts that you saw of. Wow, so we're down to the end of the chart. Here we've got railroad switching yard, terminal piggy backyard. That's something that's currently allowed, but if you understand switching yards and terminals, those take up massive amount of ground and it's like railroad tracks everywhere that can switch and move. You normally see those in industrial districts, but given where our railroad is currently, we definitely wouldn't want it in our downtown area. But something like a actual railroad station or terminal might be appropriate at some point in the future. And then again, back to self-service, we moved it up. And then home occupations, here we just added some footnotes for those districts that they're already allowed by right, but they basically follow the same standards as our regular home occupations minus no BZA approval. So any questions on chart one that you can think of today that we have some further questions on? Definitely if you're going, you know, through this, I think after today, it may be easier to go through the chart on your own and highlight maybe ones that you now think of and say, okay, let's go back to those ones.
As far as data centers, it sounded like you said you just don't want them in the city because they draw too much energy. Is that a, Matt, have you ever sold one?
A data center?
We did Redstone data center.
Redstone's data as a data center. I think that there's probably, there's probably some out the gateway that just went to the random office building is my guess.
They just embed them in a sense.
Yeah, most of the time they're a secondary use to it, but the ones we're talking about are the ones that are as massive as a solar energy farm that take up hundreds of acres or 20 acres and we just don't have that kind of.
Are they, I just wondered, are they strategically located for service capability or not really?
Usually cheap land, cheap ones.
Cheap land.
It's not like one company's data, it's usually like thousands of companies that they're data there, you know.
I just wondered about a center on 100 acres.
Yeah.
But we've limited them to 15,000 square feet, so you're not, really doesn't die with 100 acres, right?
Right.
The other question I had was why would, I don't know where that might be from, but I didn't know what Redstone's.
I think, I think we were trying to.
They were about 15.
I think, I think, Matt, I think we looked at Redstone and kind of used that as a benchmark that that was, that, and I think that 15 or under is allowed in commercial highway. So something along those lines we felt was appropriate, but if you went to the larger type facilities for multiple businesses or for Google or whatever, that that really wasn't appropriate in commercial highway.
Scott Grugby's got one that's next to Deans, but it would be less than 15,000.
What about new, I'm always thinking like future stuff, like if the EV thing takes off, like a gas state, like, you know, charging facility.
Hey, you know, it's.
It's on your agenda this week.
That's very timely, Brian, because another zoning ordinance amendment that.
You went way too excited.
Don't encourage me.
Tomorrow, Katie Knoll will be making a presentation to you and recommending the scheduling of a public hearing for EV parking regulations, EV parking standards for our zoning ordinance. And so, because that is something that we have seen an influx of, and so we're trying to get ahead of that, stay ahead of the curve on that. And so there will be discussion on that tomorrow.
Just talk about. Are they all private or are they all public? I mean, I said they're all city initiated, those lots are private.
The EV charging stations, 99% of them are private, yeah. Someone wanting to retrofit an existing parking lot to facilitate the charging of their customers in their parking lot or new developments that want to put some in, in their new parking lots.
So just jumping to chart one end notes, so these go with the chart, just a couple of minor changes there. The top text really tells folks what the purpose of the CCO overlay column is, that, you know, where it's not permitted, you'll see the N, and if it's N with an asterisk, they're prohibited unless it's less than 3,000 square feet.
You want to shrink the left side.
There we go. Love that one out there. So this is the text that we've talked about adding, so this just tells the reader how to use chart one. Section three, this is kind of ticking and tying back to our motor vehicle sales. We're making sure that we use the same terminology.
And you are going to correct what they're looking at, that last line under the CCO.
It was like 30,000.
Occupants more than.
Oh.
Is that 3,000 or 30,000?
Should be 3,000. Good catch.
Well, I didn't.
You got it. This is one of those where's Wanda movies.
We're here at insurance, the difference between 3,000 and 3,000.
Yes, there is. Huge difference. Oh, that's funny. Here, this one's applying to all motor vehicle sales and this one, I think we were going to circle back. This is one of the sections we didn't finish internally, so I'm just wanting to make sure we were ticking and tying the terminology. But this talks about on an approved site plan is when it's triggered and any improved areas would also be included. And then accessory apartment, in our CCO, there are some different standards, actually. Accessory apartments are allowed by right. They do not go to the BZA within our CCO. It's the only district. So we're just stating that here so they're clear. And then home occupations, as I mentioned earlier, there was a little bit of discrepancies between this section and the BZA, but we wanted to make sure clearly, because some of these things the planning director shouldn't approve at all, but we also knew that BZA would not approve a taxi service, a kennel, an auto repair, a gun dealer, or, and so gun dealer is one of the new ones that we've added in because we have had inquiries. Professional office, in the past, Matthew's seen that really those uses don't seem to have any impact because it's usually a person's desk and they're doing everything from their computer. And then we added in age restricted sales of any kind. We've had inquiries of putting vape shops for sale in home occupations as well as potentially alcohol and tobacco. So we thought that anything that's age restricted where it really can't be enforced, probably should not be in home occupation. 12. So under that inoperable vehicles portion, we're just clarifying, clarifying some of the new terminology, so we're ticking and tying the two. And then staff looked at really these type buffers. What we've noticed is they're required to have a landscape buffer, all the landscape does, and then you have no way of screening any of the storage of the vehicles that are inoperable, dismantled, and they're probably close to a graveyard of vehicles. So here, we looked at changing it to a type B buffer with a solid permanent masonry wall. So it's not just the chain link fence with the slats in it that rocks away in a couple of years, but something that that really does what is intended. As we mentioned earlier, here's that tobacco vape shop footnote that has that 1,000 foot separation from other vape shops, public, private schools, parks, daycare centers, churches, and a minimum 250 foot separation, which isn't very much, between residential uses and the vape shop. And then outdoor storage, this is one section, normally we would not list out a specific section because they could be lost over time or changed over time, but outdoor storage is one of the things we want to make sure people can easily find, and so we're directing them there. And then this is the last one we already talked about, that 3,000 square foot is when artisan uses. Those couple of uses that were in the chart that have this particular footnote. So that's the end of chart one end notes. Are there any questions on these ones?
So I don't have a question, but since we have our engineering folks here, I mean, are there, hey Clyde, are there, is there anything else that y'all deal with on a regular basis that you still think is ambiguous with respects to what you've seen? Because we might as well tackle it now if that's the case and y'all deal with it more than this planning commission deals with it. So I mean, am I okay asking that question?
I feel like no.
I got one. Well, I think, I think the market issue comes up consistently that all the drive for the CCO was really about allowing density, you know, parking restriction, you know, relaxing the parking requirements. And it seems like, it's almost like we got into it and it was so successful, we had to back out, kind of start pulling it out. And now I feel like it's gotten into a little bit of a subjective position where, you know, if we get the parking requirement, we didn't quite need it to some standard, it's not the ordinance, that we're having to kind of go back and go, well, how do we, we can't really play that game because we're under the density, we're over parked, but we're not quite what the city wants. So we find ourselves kind of really in a weird spot going, you know, we're going to give in because we're going to give in because we just have, you know, that's where we're going to go, but it puts us in a position where we thought we did the right thing and then we're finding ourselves going. Because I think the CCO has been the most successful zoning strategy I've seen. I think it's really done its job, but I think it's, the density has kind of freaked us out a little bit, you know, because it's coming in faster than we thought, it's coming in a little bit more than we'd like, maybe the look we're not happy with ultimately, so it's been kind of getting a little bit on. I love it still, but I feel like it's a little bit ambiguous now that we've kind of lost a little traction as far as how to really nail it. And primaries over parking, because it's always, guest parking is really subjective. There's not really a rule, it's kind of a field.
Well, like Holly mentioned at the outset, we did not tackle parking with this zoning ordinance amendment.
It needs to be all by itself, but it's the next one on my list?
But we have made changes to the parking standards even before now, before reviewing it, so for that reason, Clyde, looking at, you know, density and how it impacts density. And then also being able to see how some of the developments are actually functioning now with the actual parking standards, even the change, we've seen that those have the operation, circulation, so we have some history as well, so we'll continue to look at it. And that's kind of what we're doing at this, we're kind of looking at, you know, what are those things that is rubbing up against the new type of development that's happening in the city of Mercury Grove and how do we try to clean all that up? Parking is a huge conversation in different areas as well as, you know, we have garage parking structures now, and so we had to go in and clean up our parking structure guidelines, regulations because we saw that, you know, we're getting requests for more of those. So we'll keep chipping away at all of it as we see it come up and continue, but parking is next on the list. It's, it takes on a different life of its own because it's not just the CCO, it has, you know, it's everywhere, so we'll keep chipping away at it. What else? I don't identify anything else off the top of my head. Good subject matter. And Matt actually went through and sent in some, sent in some suggestions as well in that territory, so we think we'll take a look at those as well. And we'll continue to look at it, although there's other areas that we'll look at and staff currently looking at, design guidelines and all kinds of things, so it's, we'll continue to look at those things that provide the least opportunity for us to have productive planning commission meetings, meetings with developers and those things, but it takes a long time to dig into it and bring it back before you guys, but we will be bringing some more items like this back to you.
So chart two.
Holly, real quick, one just question, as far as the masonry walls surrounding any kind of automobile, is that going to be a six foot, eight foot, do we know? There's a requirement on that one.
I vote three.
We just put a height on it, but.
Our clients want six.
I'm sorry, Nancy Riley can look over the top. Not screening much.
Does the planning commission have a height preference? We can, and we can put that in there.
And we're screening automobiles? Is that what we're now?
It's made like auto body shops.
Eight.
That doesn't include like RV kind of, that's a separate. This would be for 16, 20. But an RV could be inoperable and wrecked, I mean, would you want it? I mean, is there a difference in the?
We could go 12 if you wanted.
I do not. I just want a clarification.
Our client took it with seven.
I think it's a, it's a two tiered approach. You've got the landscape buffer and the wall, so hopefully between the two, be screened as much as possible.
With the wall requirement in there?
Masonry.
Like I understand the, what's the thing that just hit a brrr, an eight foot brrr?
Seems like it would be.
I understand the visual, you don't, like you're trying to block the visual.
Yeah, it seems like that would be kind of inefficient use of land.
Hold on, I'm just looking for options.
Land is cheaper than masonry walls.
I mean, we can, we can explore other.
Did you use the same thing? That's all I might like.
Yeah, I think we, we can, we can look at that, Matt. I think what we're trying to do, our current standard says a type D buffer, and over the years, we have gotten a lot of people that didn't want to do a type D buffer, that's a 15 foot wide buffer, and they've looked for alternatives like, you know, can we do a fence with slats in it, or can we do the fence with the mesh attached to it? And so we've been, you know, for years trying to work with folks on finding an alternative and so, but yeah, I mean, we're open to those types of suggestions on that.
And I do understand the difficulty with the fence with mesh or slats, because that's a, maybe that's not married, it's not why.
Yeah.
Never last.
Never last. Okay, so switching gears, for those who may not know, chart two is kind of the second piece that most new development will look for because it sets all of our standards. So a lot of times when you're seeing comparatives in districts, we have width requirements of how wide a lot has to be, your front yard setback, side yard, rear yard setback maximum height, density, and then what we call intensity ratios and maximum lot coverage. But maximum lot coverage might be a misnomer of a term, it actually is maximum building footprints. So if you've got a 10,000 square foot lot and a thousand square foot footprint sitting on it, it's that thousand square feet divided by 10,000 and you would have a 10% lot coverage. It doesn't include paving, doesn't include driveways, doesn't include patios, just think of a roof over a structure sitting on the ground, and that's what your max lot coverage is. So we apply those in all districts and over time, what we've started to see is kind of some movement in a couple of districts. And really what we originally started with was our RD district, and I'll go back, but our RD district, you may recall, we had our recent planned development on Castle and staff started to do some research and about 70% of our RD lots are non-conforming lots, meaning they don't meet our standards at all. That's a huge non-conformity. So we looked at potential ways to continue to encourage single family detached dwellings and give a little bit of relief on what people, when they hear, oh, I'm a duplex district, I should be able to build a duplex. Well, no, you've got to be 8,000 square feet. You know, so there's this, this kind of dichotomy of people not understanding what they can or can't do, and then there's the reality of 70% of the lots don't meet that. Most of our RD lots are in the CCO, there are a couple more outside the CCO, but what we were looking at, really, our current two family dwelling, it required 8,000 square foot. So we looked at our RS4 zone district and said, gosh, don't those standards make better sense? Because an RD district by right would be a more intense zoning district, that it would make sense if we want to continue to encourage single family detached dwellings, that maybe for that purpose, we would copy the RS4 district and bring it into the RD district. So this is the current zoning that we have in our standards. And so this one allows there to be a single family detached without a forced. to about 6,300 square feet was our average of our, most of our RD lots. So by going to 6,500, we only had a very small handful that would be legal non-conforming lots, but we wanted to make sure it was reasonable. The 50-foot, most of our things are actually 50 square, 50 square foot, 50 feet in width in most of our districts. So a lot of times they're like one or two feet short of that 55, but 50-foot still gets you what you need for our utilities for a two-family dwelling. And again, if you look at this 10.9, a single-family versus an RD, when you do the math, the 6,500, your density is at 14.5, which is more in line with, you know, similar districts. The other thing that we looked at is coverage for the max lot coverage. You'll see currently our RS4 is a 40%, we never see 50%, but the smaller the lot, the harder it is to make that fit. If you think of some of the easy approvals where you approve those rear yard setbacks, you've got like a 3,500 square foot lot. So this is really allowing for this as long as you meet all of the other standards, which really those setbacks standards do more of the regulating than the max lot coverage. And again, that max lot coverage is only the building. So that's kind of the RD district. And then here, throughout, you'll see this 10 with a seven end note for our single-family detached units. If you read further into the text, this 10 is actually five and five, but it's buried in the text, so it's very difficult for most people to implement.
Just to, yeah, clean up, a cleanup for, to make it easier to understand for staff, for zero lot line, setbacks for zero lot line, make it clearer for staff, make it clear for the development community.
So you'll see kind of a handful of those going down the chart and then coming back up to the chart. The other thing that we noticed under the max lot coverage, and after discussing a little bit more, is that what we're really seeing in our RS8 districts is people are pushing really that 32% and just over the 30% marks, and we don't want to discourage necessarily smaller homes and have those limitations if they're meeting the other standards. So that was one of the areas that looked to need some adjustment as well as we've developed over time. And here's again those ones that I mentioned that Matthew had. These are pretty straightforward. And then down to the end, this one you may recall, this is in our CU zone district, which is basically MTSU campus. Traditionally, you'll see them override the city's rules because they're state-owned, state-owned Trump's local policies, but most of their structures don't exceed 65 feet in size, and most of those are set back to their interiors anyway. So we thought that it was probably more appropriate to see the change here, what they actually can do anyway, with or without us. So any questions on these particular standards? This is kind of our bread and butter of how we evaluate every single project that comes in the door.
But the 65 feet would apply to private schools too, right?
It says educational institutions and other uses, but the CU district, I believe is-
It's almost exclusively the campus of MTSU. So, and really what that is, it's just removing a rub that's in our zoning regulations to what MTSU wants to do on its campus. They've had several buildings that they built on campus that exceed the 35-foot maximum height in the CU zone. You know, when it comes right down to it, there's, they can override our regulations and they've chosen to do that, so we're just removing that rub to where-
Like Providence couldn't build a building that was 65 feet tall.
Right, because this only applies to the CU district.
Okay.
Any questions on it? And ticking and tying that with the chart two end notes, pretty small. One was this first one, which was a little bit confusing of text, so we just wanted to simplify it that for those with footnote number three, that they're multi-story buildings, their setbacks would be 10 feet for a single story, 15 feet for a two-story, 20 feet for a three, and 25 for a five, 25 for four-story buildings, whereas the text that it is today, most people don't know how to apply. And then section 25, we're just telling folks that applicable building setbacks and height regulations can be found in accessory structures. And then lastly, the city core also applies, if there's any conflict between the CCO and the other standards, go to these particular sections and those will prevail. So again, clean up to tick and tie with the chart two end notes. All technical fun stuff. Okay, so we're back to our excerpted traffic changes. So just make sure I didn't miss any definitions. So accessory apartment, we clarified so that we know what an accessory apartment is. There's been some confusion between building codes and planning. And so we're wanting to make sure it's clearly that it has its own separate exterior door, it has provisions for cooking, food preparation, that includes sink, electrical outlets to accommodate kitchen appliances such as refrigerator, oven, stove. Back in the day, it used to be you had to have 20 outlets to have a stove, those sort of things. Nowadays, you can just plug in a 110 oven and be ready to go, but we wanted to make sure that it would include toilet, sink, and shower and/or bathtub. I might not have caught that last one, in that particular one that I'm looking at.
Yeah, so I think the definitions that we haven't gone over so far are mostly kind of of a housekeeping nature. I think we've, so I think, maybe just list those and then see if the planning commission has any questions.
We can stop if you want. So again, whole new, one, just so that it ticks and ties with the use chart. We already talked about the automobile motive, I'm going to pass by the ones we've already talked about. Building height, we're talking about how do you measure that? Currently, it's proposed as from the lowest grade at the base of a building, and then we added in to the highest point of a parapet wall. In the past, we weren't using the parapet wall in all of our areas. Again, some of these we talked about earlier. Floor area, we're just clarifying those particular terms. We've added in gross floor area as well to our terminology. General service repair shop, it did not have a definition before, it was already in chart one. Lot coverage, we talked about earlier, talked about, talked about, talked about. And here's that parking structure. So a structure used for the parking of vehicles, one or more stories, and so we'll take a look at that parking lot, but you'll see here, we'll see it in section 25, how we've addressed parking lots for now that we may refine further. Oh, we already talked about that one, that one, that one, that one. And then yard is just adding in, this is our exceptions to yard. So these are the things that can actually be outside of those yard setbacks. So if you see like a porch can go five feet in, this is the section that we get that from. So we're just clarifying that other balconies and covered porches are also included there.
My only question on those, I think y'all could maybe increase that to five feet, it used to be, was it 42 inches or something? Have you thought about, what's the logic behind five feet? If we made it wider, you might encourage wider porches, especially with these shallower front setbacks, they might get used a little more, it might be a little more social on the street, some of that. I don't know logic to the vibe, but-
Yeah, I think what, and it's not going to prohibit people from having deeper porches, I think, but try to honor the setback, but allow things that are not substantial to encroach into the setback, and, you know, like what we settled on, you know, whether arbitrary or not, was five feet, and that anything greater than that was really too substantial to be, to go into the front setback.
Can you see a problem with that?
Oh, I just like eight footer.
Or 10.
My opinion's subjective too.
And if you have an eight-foot deep porch, you can still project five feet of that eight feet into the front setback.
Yeah, I just thought if we, you know, that's fine. That's not super important.
Okay, so moving on to the next section.
I can think of one. So this is one, real brief, because this is really kind of more policy and procedure than anything, and, you know, trying to be a little bit more efficient, and Matt and Clyde and Chris, this may interest y'all as folks who are trying to help your clients. We really wanted to kind of eliminate some excess time in the zoning process, and there's some language in our ordinance right now that requires that within 10 days, the recommendations have to go to the city council. And then we've had kind of an informal policy that I've checked with legal, and it's not anything that's mandated by our city code or state law, that we take the list of public hearings to the city council and say, will you schedule them for this date? So what we are proposing in this is that rather than taking that extra step, which adds about two or three weeks into the process, depending on council's meeting schedule, is to have predetermined meeting dates where public hearings will be scheduled, to add predictability to the development community and also predictability for council and staff to know when those meetings will be scheduled. So if you have a rezoning request that's been approved at X meeting, you can pretty reliably say that that will be before council for public hearing on X date, as opposed to us having to bring that list to you guys and then have y'all vote to schedule it. We're putting that with the city manager's office to place those on one of, kind of one of the predetermined meeting dates.
Sounds good.
Sounds good to me.
Absolutely. I've been begging for that for at least five years.
Wow.
She's been begging the right person.
The wheels of government move slow sometimes.
Matthew, real quick on that, why is that not happening? Was it a hardship for that process, or were you always concerned about overloading the docket, or what was the-
Honestly, I have, I've been here 22 years, honestly, I have no idea why we've done it that way. It's just always been the way that we've done it. So I emailed Adam Tucker and asked him, is there any reason in our city code or in state law that requires us to take a list of the recommendations for council to vote on the scheduling? He said no, and so, you know, administration has really wanted us to try to streamline that process, and we thought that was kind of a low-hanging fruit that we could take in-
I will take it.
Two or three weeks.
Thank you.
It's kind of like when Cap didn't want to say the agenda anymore.
You're going to need unless they don't need, like, you know.
I don't really know.
That's true, they just canceled our meeting for Thursday. We had stuff scheduled, like all of us were supposed to take our Christmas videos, and Craig canceled the meeting, and we were like, oh, okay, we still have to come for our Christmas videos.
So see, we do try to abbreviate things. Site plan review.
Don't you forget that, Matt.
This comes out of our site plan review checklist. There have been a couple of issues lately that we've been trying to tackle, which is exposed HVAC units. We don't have the information at the time, we're looking at them and we're bringing them before you, so we're looking at having those pieces of information being included in documentation when we see a project come in, because we've had eight, 10, 12-foot tall HVAC units coming in nowadays, and they're not-
So how do we regulate that?
So you-
So how do we prove that as submitting body? Well, I mean, do we send you an AC unit that we anticipate them using along with our parapet height?
Usually the height, maximum height of an HVAC unit and your maximum height of your parapet.
Okay.
So they should basically be, but we haven't internally discussed it staff-wise, how we roll that out, but we're wanting to get ahead of it because it's really painful when somebody puts something up and then you have to tell them, you need to now build an entire screen wall around your entire building.
Because I was actually talking with an architect about it yesterday on a retail center that we're trying to do, where if two tenants take it, they might have two five-ton units, and if one tenant takes it, they may try to put a 10-ton unit. So what do we design to and how do we present the proof that we're hiding it to y'all?
Right, and I think that at the time of building permit issuance, you should know what, you know, units that you're putting in place, but if at the beginning process, you're defining, here's where your roof line is, here's where the top of the parapet, you've got four feet. HVAC units, you don't want to exceed four feet.
So, okay, that's how we would go about it at this point?
I would think at this point. So bare-bones basics, but the idea is usually you'll see it on an elevation, you'll dash it in, but where we seem to find the issues are with our fast-food restaurants, because those just take more massive units. And we did find out that there are smaller units that they can order, they just choose not to do it. And some people, what they'll do is they'll put their ductwork on top of the roof, which causes more of a problem, because now you're setting the unit on top of a two-foot dock, and now it's two feet above your parapets. And there's other people that will actually put those ductwork in the building, which then gets rid of most of the problem.
Thank you.
So, and then the other thing, we just wanted to give people a heads up, and this one's always been a little bit of a struggle, but we did want to let people know is sometimes there could be a request for either a traffic impact study or just a traffic analysis when a proposed development generates 100 peak hour trips as determined by the city engineer. So really the idea is, is what seems to be kind of the baseline, and it would be on a case-by-case basis, you might have noticed in the last six months, we tried to get that input early on from our traffic and engineering folks, and, but it's not a telltale if you hit 101, if it's on a, you know, major thoroughfare where you've got plenty of capacity, it may not be an issue, but we just wanted to, some people will say, nothing requires me to do that. Well, this is, we won't. So it's very loose language. Jumping on to section nine, this is very short, but this is ticking and tying those items we talked about earlier with that age-restricted sales of any kind would not be permitted as a home occupation.
So those are, so there are, the special use permit standards are in section nine, and so there are home-based business standards for home-based businesses that are allowed by right administratively, and then there are home-based business standards for those that are only allowed by the Board of Zoning Appeals via the special use permit process. And so this is just including that language that we included in the end note in chart one, making it consistent.
And then jumping over to our city core overlay district, you may recall, we just adopted the new general plan, and this just lets folks know that there are two new districts that predominantly affect the CCO, which is our mixed-form housing, and our new neighborhood compatible overlay, and that we're trying to be sensitive to those particular uses and try to, best extent possible, honor the recommendations of that particular plan. So when you go to our general plan nowadays, you'll see the general plan land uses, future land use map, but you'll also see our historic bottoms, our north highlands, and then these new districts are also listed in a minute there, and so we wanted to include those. Here, we're just looking at moving some of this legal non-conforming further down to better address it. Continuance of legal non-conforming uses, here, we're just specifying that if they are putting things back in place, that they would have setbacks, lot coverage, and parking standards, and this is a new one, with any CCO exceptions within three years of demolition. We've had some properties where property was demolished 20 years ago. We've had some properties where property was demolished 20 years ago, 15 years ago, 10 years ago. And as that neighborhood is changing and morphing, somebody says, well, geez, I want to build what was there 20 years ago. Well, there needs to be a timeframe. Currently, state law has a three-year requirement that they look at for commercial-type uses. So we thought that that may be a good place to start, is at least have that three years within the demolition as potentially a baseline. But that's something that we thought some kind of standard needs to be in place. We're not set on three-year standard, but there's some point when development is so different from when the structure was originally demolished, does it lose any of its nonconformities for inventory, when the structure hasn't existed? So most laws regarding legal non-conforming uses...
What about it, that a building's been vacant that long?
We have had that as well. And trying to think, Roman, would that also apply? Well, here, we're just saying demolition.
Yeah, I think you get into the use versus structure issue. Where even if it's, even if it hasn't been used, you know, and usually, usually a use, if you're going to change the use, it has to be the zoning is for that particular use. But the structure itself, as long as the structure is still standing, does it have to be torn down or demolished?
With you? That makes sense.
And here's where we start to talk about the use itself. So you'll notice lawfully established non-conforming use versus structures. And so here, we've had a couple of cases over the last few years that we've had legal do a lot of research on. And especially in our CCO, we have some areas where, let's say it was three units, but it's in an ORIC district. So in those particular cases, it says basically, you can continue the use, and you have a one-time demolition, that you can deal the project and rebuild that non-conforming use. And so legal has weighed in that that also means it retains the number of dwelling units. So if we can show legally that it was established with two units, three units, they can rebuild two or three units. And, but they need to meet the parking standards, setback standards. Because if you increase, in most cases, they are increasing the size, you automatically trigger those new standards. So the idea is, is you want to encourage basically reinvestment in trailers, to remove the trailer, and to get something that really makes better sense. But this kind of just nails down the more specifics of it. And then here, we're just clarifying two family dwelling units. Some of our standards in our CCO allow for duplex-type unit to be two separate buildings, but we still classify them as two-family dwellings, which has impacts on some of the other standards. And then this talks about that chart one, again, the prohibited uses, and it points the viewer to that. And it's only 3,000 square feet here, not 30. And then here's the easy part. You can see, remove, remove, removed. And this is where we talked about all of these being embedded into that chart one. So instead of a person going through three pages of text, they can now go to just one chart, look at the use that they care about, and determine if it's not allowed by our CCO. Questions? Moving on, here, we're just talking about, again, parking structure, more lot where freely parking is available, just ticking in time terminology, design standards. This is one we've come up with a problem in our CCO. In our CCO, you have a build-to standard that says, whatever the average of the block is, you have to build your structure to that line, but no further back than 25 feet. In some areas, the average setback was 10 feet. That's a problem. Because then you get into your public utility usements, for one. And then the other thing we found is people built a porch all across the bottom and all across the top, all eight feet off the right-of-way. Oh, my gosh! That wasn't the intent. So the idea, again, only in the CCO, we don't have a problem with it outside the CCO, is that we have no more than 50% of the facade that encroaches, you know, further into that five-foot setback that we just talked about, that a porch can go into, but it still needs to be not closer than 10 feet to the property line, because it causes problems for utilities. But that, we discovered as we were rolling it out and how it actually came out.
On the build-to, is there any variability there, plus or minus three feet?
Currently, it doesn't, but I can see the value in it, because, but I will say, in the CCO, you almost can't build parking in any of the front yards, entire CCO. And so that's the bigger question, is if you're setback at 25 feet, you can park a car in front of the house. This way, you don't, but what we were trying to avoid is there's some setbacks we have on Maple that are like 65 feet, and you can park an army of vehicles in the front yard, and it's all concrete. So in the CCO, we see most of the properties don't have any garages, few have driveways. And so we didn't want to change the entire CCO to look like a regular brand-new subdivision on a greenfield.
Yeah, and I don't disagree with that. I just think sometimes there's some, maybe you have a little bit of flexibility, but done more in the CCO than I have, to speak better, but it seemed like a couple of feet here or there might help at the time.
Yeah, I think the other variability cause is going to be most of them are going to be planned developments anyway, so that we can get that.
Yeah, we work it in 95% of the property.
They are, yeah. Yeah, it's always been exception so far for me. The last, we're able to manage it.
That's a good point. I'll take a look at it, Matt. Building entrances, this is just talking about if you have something that's on a multiple lots, that you should have architecture detailing on those other frontages. So let's say it's a quarter lot, here's your primary frontage. This is saying that if you have secondary frontages, there should be enhanced architectural detailing. Formal open space, this was just clarifying that the 50-square-foot private open space is clear of obstructions, meaning, you know, if you can't get to it or use it, it shouldn't be part of the square footage. Perimeter landscape yard, found out really that this three-foot allowance for other planting yards, you really can't fit trees in them for most part and have them survive. So we went ahead and said where those three-foot yards exist, that you could plant them with shrubbery instead of trees, again, because we're in a much more dense area. And those are the proposals in the CCO, but...
I just wanted to, I know we're past 11 o'clock. I wanted to be mindful of the planning commissioner's time. We have a few minor sections to go through. Is everybody okay continuing on until we get done? I would say we probably have about 10 or 15 minutes left.
Can I ask, are we going to also touch on the potential new overlap districts? Is that within your 10 or 15 minutes?
It'd be quick to...
Okay. So jumping to section 25, this is our temporary accessory structures. And here's where we talked about a parking lot. So here, we're talking about a parking lot cannot be a standalone use, but must be accessory to an allowed primary business and its structures. And then under the prohibited temporary accessory uses, again, standalone parking lots. But I think this section will, you know, take a fresh look at. And if you have any, like, additional comments that you can send to us, that would be helpful to help us shape that for y'all. And then bulk locations, no accessory structure. This one also came up in our Manny project recently. So we started to look at, and all of our accessory structures, you may not know, but where your setback is, 25% of that setback area, so let's say it's a 25-foot rear setback, 25% of that area can be occupied by an accessory structure as close as five feet to the property line. What we're starting to see in the Manny project is, again, the lots are so tight, if people want to fit their own garage or separation, really, they're needing more like 40, 50% of that area. I think in that particular case, we saw 60%. But it was a great separation between multifamily-type uses and single-family-type uses, and I think single-family will really appreciate having that extra room, to put it. But 50% we thought was pushing the limits, but if you think that that's a little bit, I mean, if you think about what would normally be a backyard, 50% of it is occupied by a garage, is that a problem? Is that too high of a number?
I think when the 25% was put in there, that was when we had predominantly RS-12, RS-15 lots, and it would be, it would be much more imposing to have a garage take up 50% of a much wider, larger rear yard. But now, in this day and age of bigger lots on smaller houses, or excuse me, bigger houses on smaller lots, it seemed to be more appropriate not to limit that to 25 feet. And we've come up against some instances where that, or 25%, we've come up against some instances where, where, you know, on an RS-8 lot or an RS-6 lot, it didn't seem to be that big a deal to have a garage taking up more than 25% of the required rear yard.
And this would apply citywide, because we're out of the CCO section, so this policy we're looking at would be a citywide policy. So it's, you know, a little bit different. Sometimes in the CCO-specific, you see it more impactful, but Matthew thought that this was appropriate in, you know, the other districts as well.
So you can have an RS-15 lot where there'll be a garage in the back taking up 50% of the rear yard.
Unless we decided to have a qualifier that said a different percentage for an RS-12 or RS-15 lot, which we could do that as well. And then that way, you know, kind of the smaller lots that are limited to where they can have things, and really, I think it allows for more detached garages versus attached product. So visually, that has a very different impact on the street. It sounds like you might like that idea better.
Well, it just seems to me like the, you leave the 25% and make an exception for the small lots, that they could have up to 50% in. I mean, I don't know, maybe, I guess it matters.
Well, and, you know, like even in, you know, if you go to like, you know, an RS-12 subdivision, like the Reserve, for example, where, you know, you look at, you know, someone, you know, may want to have like a detached three-car garage or something, and it may, you know, in RS-12, those lots are 70 feet wide minimum, and so if someone wants to have a detached garage, it may, even in RS-12, may rub up against that 25%. So I think as the houses get bigger and the lots get smaller, even as the houses get bigger on, you know, the larger lots, sometimes it's, you know, people want to have larger accessory structures.
Okay.
You know, just, but we can certainly...
We'll change it again later.
We can certainly, we can certainly graduate that percentage if that's the planning commissioner's wishes.
Picturing all those detached garages that get added on and all those.
I think, I think it's something that we see more of being an issue in the smaller lots than...
Because they just don't have as much land area.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Off-street loading and parking, and again, this ties to that, this is multifamily residential So this is, again, back to the parking lot as a standalone, so we'll take a look at this section in conjunction with the others, and then going to check section 28.
Yes, so section 28 was, it's just really a clarification. We had an instance, and, you know, lots of times zoning ordinance amendments come from experience. We had an instance where we had, there was a non-conforming structure that wanted to go up, non-conforming in that it was in the front setback. And it was unclear, there was, even amongst staff, we debated back and forth whether or not going up for a non-conforming structure create, was an increase in the existing degree of nonconformity. And we couldn't come to a consensus, so we said, well, let's just write it in that you can go up, up to one additional story beyond what you are, but beyond what the structure is right now, even if it is a non-conforming structure in the setback.
This one on non-conforming lots of record, with building codes, no side yard shall be less than five feet, and that's predominantly because if you have five feet on the adjacent property, buildings need to be 10 feet apart for fire codes, to have no limitations on openings. And that is the end of that section we already went through, and that is the end of this section.
End of section 4A. Moving on to section 4B, preliminary discussion of potential new overlap districts.
Can you pull up Jay's?
Now you guys, now you guys have the hard work, right? Putting on your thinking caps.
Yeah, and thank y'all for all the feedback this morning. I think, I think we know the areas that we need to continue to take a look at, and we'll, we'll continue to fine-tune that. We really appreciate the discussion.
Well, we appreciate y'all taking the time to explain it to us all. Much better.
It's almost like having training, right? It's like another training on Friday.
12.
Yeah. Can we skip the type of training?
So, over the bridge, hit the bridge. So there's been conversations about certain areas of the city of Marcusville, Northwest Broad comes up in almost everybody's conversation about redevelopment, and what does it look like when it redevelops? And how do we, how do we help get, help get better quality buildings when they actually redevelop? So there's, there's been an ask of the council for us to take a look at an overlay district that will start on Northwest Broad at the, at the Bridgie-McBridge and go to Clark. And that would be 300 feet off of the property line deep in that area as well. And so we'll take a look at that, and just in hope. The other, the other ask has been not just an overlay district for redevelopment, but also how can we put some parameters in when they're actually going, changing uses, or going back in with the same use, to be able to try to help spur some, some better-looking quality buildings to upgrade those areas. So Northwest Broad from, from the bridge to Clark on Northwest Broad, and then the other area is going to be from, on Church Street, South Church Street. And so, find 620, Matthew, if you would, address 620. So the CCO actually lands somewhere around in this address, like 630, from like 610 up is a CCO, so we didn't want to overlap that overlay with the CCO, so it gets all goofy and hard to be able to manage. So we just left, we went from maybe 630 all the way to Warrior Drive is the ask for us to put an overlay district in those areas. Same thing, 300, 300 feet out on each side, as a way of starting to look at when those items, when they start redevelop in those areas, how do we, how are we managing to get some better, better developments in those areas? So, over to the bridge just south of Warrior, right there.
Say again?
The bridge just south of Warrior. That'd be, that'd be a big location right there.
Oh, the over here?
Trying to get bubbas in there. We appreciate that, Matt.
Yeah, so, yeah, we can, I mean, I think the idea, you know, is making sure we're setting those parameters, but, yeah, we can, we can do that.
Yep.
How come you stopped at Clark? What was the... Clark kind of started changing. It really started changing what that look was, and it didn't have as, and when they develop out there, most time, they're, they're coming back in with different use, and just seem like a better landmark.
Meaning that you're not really seeing upgrades in those sections, and north of there, we're actually seeing changes.
So it starts on the south side of Clark? It encompasses Crunch, but not the Shell Station?
Yeah.
Gotcha.
All right. Just a...
Those are the, in consideration for us to start working on the overlay to bring, bring in.
To kind of define the specifics that would be included?
So the area was defined, but then specifics.
Okay. Have you got any thoughts, concepts, carrot, stick, is it a mix of the two?
Probably going to be a, a mix of the two, so work through what that looks like, Matt. Most of that is light industrial zone, so it's, you know, it's going to be just, you know, what, what does that look like, how do we work through that, that opportunity for redevelopment?
I don't think council's vision is to have it super, super stringent, it will be one of the lower GDO classes for strictness.
Yeah, talked about like, you know, if it's GDO5.
Five, yeah.
It's kind of that concept, so something a little bit less restrictive than before.
Because I got, I started out in GDO5, they're more restrictive than the GDO. The, what, one thing that might be appropriate there is because it is industrial, because the uses is going to be the environmental aspect on redevelopment, so that, and that's costly, I mean, if it's a true redevelopment, if it's a true change of use at times, that's going to be costly, and so, could be lots of ask of, I would anticipate lots of ask of extra density or extra intensity to make that redevelopment.
And I think that, that is, those incentives that you're talking about are on the table for sure, Matt, that if somebody came in and wanted to do something and said, "Hey, density drives the ability to finance it," it would be on the table, and that conversation is over.
So what about the difficulty, but maybe the challenge of dealing with TDOT on Broad and, and the redevelopment and what they'll allow you to do and not allow you to do from a, because they have a right-of-way.
Access. Yeah. So that, so that changed about three months ago, Ken, and so now what's the, what Ron has been asking is they go to TDOT first and say, "This is, you know, TDOT has the way in, and then we come in last."
Okay.
Before, we used to come in first.
Right.
It would work. So that's, so we have three projects, Bowlin Alley being one of them, that had to access all design, and then TDOT came and said, "You can't do that."
Right, that's kind of where I'm going with this.
Yeah, so keeping that in mind, there's all the right-of-ways through there, but keeping all that in mind, really have asked the TDOT way in first.
That makes sense.
And then, so, and with the Bowlin Alley, we actually allowed them to do a temporary occupancy, because it did mesh their timeframe up.
Right.
To go ahead and move in while they work with TDOT.
I, well, this is an opinion, but I think that was the right move to work with them in that fashion.
Yeah, sure. What, just to clarify, what did TDOT change on that?
They wouldn't allow them, they, they wouldn't allow them to have one access, then they moved their, moved the development back away from the right-of-way, it caused them to lose three, four parking spaces, then they had to redesign the parking. So we'll look at those overlays and try to look at as many of those opportunities of making sure that the overlay is not creating a negative impact where individuals can and don't want to redevelop as much as possible, considering the zoning, considering the uses in those areas, but do believe that it's the right thing to do to try to, try to get those areas to get the development.
Great, well, we also got to look at low-key Memorial changing it from GDO4 to whatever the new GDO is also to the place to go.
Yeah, we can look at that, because I think we looked at that once before, you know, we talked about removing it, and that, and that didn't, didn't think that was a good idea, but we can look at that as well to see what, if that helps anywhere to go. Go. All right.
Fantastic, Kevin, lift it up there.
All right, thank you for taking time out.
What?
I did just want to, just to save some email traffic, just get a head count for tomorrow if we could, everybody planning on?
I'll be there.
I'll be there.
I can't make it.
Okay.
I'm not.
All right, all right, so.
My point answered.
Matt, bye, Chris, thank y'all as well.
Thank y'all for being here, no more business, we do it stand the turn, correct?
Take it.
He was listening.